We kind of carried over with execs, so we needed a few minutes of break in between. But I'd like to call the meeting to order. We need a motion to reconvene, open session. Thank you, Ms. Petrie and Mr. Stupien. Okay, all in favor of reconvening, open session? All right, very good. I want to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. Thank you for coming. I know we're all excited about the holiday, so we tried to start a little earlier this week instead of Thursday. So, thank you for being here. Please stand and join with us in saying your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. So, we would like to go on then to our special recognition. We have some good news from the junior high. Mr. Allison, would you care to share with us?
Ma'am, the National Junior Honor Society participated in Jefferson County Grand Can Challenge. It was a can collection that ran from October 10th to the 14th. The junior high collected a total of 674 cans. Our eighth grade band class really stepped up and donated 177 of those cans. All the items collected were donated to the Hillsborough Food Pantry. Thank you to the sponsor, Kristin Merrily, for organizing the drive today for Hillsborough Community. The junior high jazz band had five students selected to All District Junior High Jazz Band. They were Jeremy Lovier, Kaiser Karst, Jay Stewart, Eli Tucker, and Jackson Hill. Tristan Jones was also selected as an alternate. The students will perform on December 10th at Jefferson College with the rest of the All District Junior Jazz Ensemble. Jeremy Lovier and Kaiser Karst were also selected to the East Central District Number Seven Junior High Honor Band. Congratulations to all our students on their achievement. Special thank you to our National Junior Honor Society again for collecting donated items for the Fisher House. The Fisher House Foundation is best known for a network of comfort homes where military families can stay at no cost while a loved one is receiving treatment. Our students and their families donated personal items or gift cards that can be used by military families staying at the Fisher House. Special thanks to our sponsor, Kristin Merrily, for also coordinating that work while driving.
Thank you. Great things are going on there, it sounds like. Dr. Freeman, do you have some things to share also?
I do. We're very excited. The Marching Hawks finished their season with a win in the 4A class at Belleville East. They won overall in music, general effect, and percussion captions as well, ending second on the day and only scoring lower than O'Fallon Township High School. We also had three students selected to the East Central District Number Seven All District Band, Miranda Lee, Logan Howard, and Autumn Winslip. They will audition on December 3rd for state. We also had one student selected as an All District Jazz Band alternate. Claire Maui was selected as the tenor saxophone alternate, and she will also audition at state on December 3rd. Now, we're also proud to announce that our students swept the Twin City Area Optimist Annual Art Contest in the area of photography. The winners were first place with Haley Short, second place Susan Aiken, third place with Allison Newland, and we are so thankful and so proud of their teacher, Kim Stewart, also, for taking these girls to that competition. And also, we would like to share that three of our students just this weekend were named to the 2017 Missouri All State Choir. They are Ben Font, Olivia Dugan, and Eli Redd Reidenhour, and we would also like to congratulate their director, Mr. Tim Arnold.
Director Cruz, I think you have something to share.
I just wanted to recognize the intermediate after spending the morning at their Veterans Assembly this morning. This is like the third year where I've gone to this, and it gets bigger and bigger every year. To listen to the stories at breakfast with the veterans and at the end to hear them talk about our district and how we're doing it right with our kids is really makes us all worth it. And I just want to thank Ms. Reidenhour, Ms. Marchetti, and I know over the years, Dr. Thule's been a part of this too, and the staff, they did, it's just amazing. Thank you.
Okay, so did we miss anybody?
The artwork.
Is anybody discussing the artwork that's displayed?
Well, that's, it's from our junior high.
Okay.
Mrs. Balls is just asking if she can bring it up here because we didn't have anywhere to display it down there.
Okay.
She thought it had a nice twist.
And it's very nice. Gives us a little culture.
If I can add, because I was there, it's from the Optimist. This is what went to the Optimist Contest this weekend and the ones with ruins. I know that this one back here was the best of the show in its age category.
I want to say that's Kim Glass, one of our eighth graders, with the eyeball back there.
And that was also a judge's pick, and then the yellows were on.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I didn't know what was what. All right. Did we have anyone sign up to address? No? Okay. I guess you'll take a look at that. It's empty? Okay, thank you. All right, so we may proceed then to the consent agenda. We're going to need a motion to approve that consent agenda. Do I have one? Thank you, Mrs. Petrie and Mr. Cruz. Any discussion or questions or items that you'd like to pull or evaluate? Anything you have to question? Okay, everybody's good. We'll take a vote then to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? And one abstention. Okay. We'll begin with our reports for this month, and we will start with the superintendent.
I know each month I tell you that I'm not going to be very wordy, but tonight I can promise that I'm not going to be very wordy. All right, just a few things I want to bring up on the updates. The communications team, I listed down there for your review, we apparently have three board members that are wanting to participate. I sent a lengthy email out inviting patrons, parents, board members, staff members, teachers to be a part of the communications team. You see, we're going to try to meet around that December 6th, 7th timeframe. So, just an update there. Also, we start notifying you of board candidate filing December 13th. That will be prior to our next board meeting, and will run through January the 17th. And you'll see, I've listed there the qualifications according to revised Missouri statutes. An update on the stadium speakers, I know Mr. Reno's somewhere, there he is. Just a quick update, we did have a change order on the speaker installation, but it is a no-cost change order. And what happened was, we didn't have conduit like we had hoped to run underneath the field to the visitor's section of the speaker cabling and lines. So, they wound up, just rather than doing that, I think adding another speaker to point toward the visitor's section across the field. Initially, we thought we had conduit running up the poles from the press box side, but we do not. So, again, there was a change, but not a cost to the district. And finally, we're very excited, our annual performance report was finalized. The district did reach a level of 91.1. For this year, that's 127.5 out of 140 total possible points, which means we earned as a district academics with distinction in performance. So, I'm very proud of our staff, our teachers, and our kids for their efforts. So, please give them a round of applause. All right, so with that, if you want to, I'm not going to read through everything. I know there's a lot of information here for you regarding new changes in the law, but if you scroll to the bottom, just an update, we have our second tab meeting on December the 12th, and you'll see what the office schedule will be there for Christmas break. All right, that's all I have.
You ordered applause for that. All right, Director Bess, come and share with us, please, about the grounds of the
Good evening. I'm not sure if I can make that shorter. I'm doing my best. In the report I sent home, or to you, to your houses and so forth, you'll see where we just been doing some updating. We did get all the fields winter ice, which all means all the water lines are blown out, so we won't have to worry about any damages to those as we get ready to start up next spring. The city of Hillsborough's been working with their systems behind elementary where they've had some sewer breakage and so forth back there, but they are back up and running properly now, so we don't have to worry about that issue where we got some motors coming in around that area. So, they did fix this finally, or themselves. The sidewalk drainage is finally completed at the elementary. We have the little T system, and what we did, instead of going across the top of the sidewalk where the kids would have to actually walk over the top of, where original plan was, we decided to back that off and actually dig a, cut open the sidewalk, put a bigger tube underneath it where it has a bigger drainage system, then actually cover it all back up so it was a little safer for travel for the students. So, but all completed finally. The old football field update right now, they have cleaned all the dirt that was left down there from the, from the dig out, it's all been removed. They patched a little bit of the work, the city's done their part of the patches they had to do already. We still have a little bit of work to do. They've done a little bit of the road work on the bottom. The blacktop part of it will probably be next spring, so we'll keep you posted as that goes forward. And then, we worked out in the path down at the primary on some of our bridges for the students to go for a nature trip. You ever been down there? It's pretty neat to have the outdoor classroom, the teachers take them out there, and they do a great job, and they've all had a great time, but for a while, they were kind of hindered because they couldn't get across anything. So, that's all been fixed. So, there net, basically, water fountains, we talked about the lead issue with the water fountains, I think at the last meeting. We have replaced two of the three. We should get the other ones to junior high this coming week and everything, so we should get that one all complete. Again, they're not at any issue with those, but we felt like after Doc, and I talked about it, we felt like they still, being the age that they are, they should go ahead and be all magically replaced, just to be on the safe side. So, no percentage problems there. And state inspections for the elevators is coming up. They've already contacted us, the state's been in contact with us, and will be doing it, I think, the December 7th, and we'll be ready to go. Under that, work orders were pretty good, 191 for the week, for the month, so we did well. So, that's all I have for you this evening. Yes, sir. Sorry to interrupt you.
Do you have an update on the asphalt at the city building?
Oh, yes, I can. Sorry, that was last week, and I was kind of busy, I guess. The city and everything, to fill in what Dr. Corn was talking about, in case you have not seen it yet, what happened was, they brought asphalt in to fix some of the issue with the water lines. We had one of the water lines kind of blow up on them and everything, so they already had the asphalt coming in, so they said, well, so wasting the asphalt where do you want it? They put it on a patch, it's right there at the high school on the, it'll be actually the northeast corner, where we had a pretty good dip in there anyway, so they just said, here you are, here's some asphalt, fix that hole. So, we do all work together well in this community, so Colleen and them did a great job, Ellen, thank you, I forgot about that. And again, a personal, thank you again for all your thoughts and prayers from my family. So, anyone have any questions? So, if not, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, technology. This is where it goes. Oh, I was like, oh, it's there.
We had 177 completed work orders, and one project that we've been working on this month is we're implementing a new system for handling our Apple devices. In the past, the way it worked is if an app was purchased, they had to have an Apple ID. Well, we're going through a volume purchasing program now, so we can actually purchase those apps in volume, and then we can push those apps out to the different devices. And the nice thing about that is, in the past, if that person left and that device was right, we lost the app. And now, we can actually revoke the app and then reassign the app to someone else, which is really nice. And another added benefit of it is if you purchase 20 apps, you get them 50% off. So, if we're like close and someone needs like 10, we're better off getting 20 of them, and then we can use those apps for someone else in the district as well. And then, the only other really thing I had on here was training. We started our little training process, and Erin did a class on networking, and it was actually really informative, and I think it was really good for the whole team because it'll help troubleshoot problems a little bit better. And then Ethan just did one on Apple, and we'll talk about more about that on our next one. And we did, Erin and I went to an e-Rate training class, which was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Next will be the financial report.
Your financial statement was presented to you in your update. We're tracking, very consistent with how we did last year. Our expenditures are tracking slightly higher, and I think that's because we started that payroll, that first payroll in August a little bit earlier, so it's a big chunk of it. Revenue's coming in pretty much as we expected, hopefully next month or within the next few weeks, we start seeing our local tax collections roll in, because we're kind of waiting on getting those, and I haven't gotten anything yet from the county, so. The district audit will be presented to you during the meeting. I've been working this past month towards finalizing the audit, preparing it for your review tonight, answering all the questions on analyzing from year to year the differences for the auditors in the management discussion letter. So, they will, Daniel Jones and Associates will present that during the new business. As far as revenue, as I said, revenue collections through October, pretty much how we expected. We're going to see an upturn here in a couple of weeks, I would hope. At the state level, Prop C's trending really good, continuing to trend good, general revenue is continuing to trend good, so we hope that continues throughout this holiday season, and people are spending money and all that good stuff.
Don't mind.
I know. We all probably have. They're seeing continued growth in the income tax and sales tax and use tax, so that's good. The state adequacy target was increased about $10 for November in our November payment because they have kind of nailed down the weighted average daily attendance, which is a factor in our formula and how we get our money. So, we'll continue monitoring that state adequacy target since that kind of drives our collections. Another thing of interest, myself and Dr. Isaacson and our payroll team went over to visit with Mayor McValley a couple of weeks ago to collaborate with them because they have the same systems that we do, they have the same accounting system, Software Unlimited, they have the same time clock system, and they're also using Aesop, the subsystem. So, it was really interesting to see how they are doing some of these things. They're not integrated with Aesop yet, as far as they're not paying from it, which we're... Did we pay from it yet, or are we getting ready to? Yeah, we're getting ready to in December, so. It was enlightening because some things that we had figured out, they hadn't quite yet. So, it was really good information, and we look forward to continuing to share with them on those programs and getting the best use we can, because what they learn from, then they can help us with and vice versa. So, anyway, other than that, I don't have anything. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I was just going to follow up with you on how we are now scheduling vans and trips. Currently, there is a trip request form that should be filled out if you have students that are involved in a trip. You can get that on the school website. It's the Student Field Trip and Excursion Form. Whenever you get ready to complete that form, you should really call Transportation and check on availability first, and then fill it out. And then, after that, the teacher turns it into the appropriate administrator and/or whoever's in charge of that. And then, after that, it gets to Debbie. Debbie puts it, she pencils it in, and then it goes to Dr. Cornman, and then he approves it, and then it gets shipped back to us. It's already scheduled, but he still has to approve that for us. We have a separate book that we use to schedule district vans. We receive calls or emails checking for availability, and we pencil them in at that time. But if there's students involved, they still have to use that Student Field Trip and Excursion Form, and we still pencil it in, and they still have to be sent to Dr. Cornman for approval. That takes a lot of time, especially since it's kind of snail mail. But looking forward, we are working on that Trip Tracker program that we had gotten, and right now, we have all the vehicles, the vans, even the truck, so if we need the truck for pulling the van trailer or anything, that's all in there right now. All of the drivers are in there, the buildings and the addresses are in there, Versatrans. Also, if we make a change on Trip Tracker, it changes it on Versatrans. I love that. Just is making it so much easier. The next step that we have to do for Trip Tracker is add the teachers and the approval paths. The parameters for each trip, it depends on the scenario. The athletics have to have different, you know, parameters set than if you had just a field trip. So, all of those little parameters have to be set, so when the teacher goes in and requests the trip, that they, the parameters are set correctly, even wheelchairs, if they need seatbelts. All of that information is going to be in there. So, if they don't get it in there right, it'll kick the trip back or it'll raise a red flag so that we can get more information from the teacher so that there's no mistakes at all, better communication. We have two, two-go, I guess it's called go-to meetings, scheduled with Versatrans. Kathy will be in on those as well to help us fine tune the program, and we're hoping to have it running by the beginning of next semester, and, because we're really close now. It's just all the little fine tuning, really, that has to be done. But I am very confident that this program will help with better communication with the teachers and administration and transportation, and I think it's going to be a whole lot more efficient, a whole lot more efficient. Do you guys have any questions about it?
I think it sounds like you've got a really good plan.
I'm so excited about this.
My question is, as far as training for teachers and different sponsors, knowing, not necessarily your program, but when they're supposed to sign up for things, you know, certain timeframe as opposed to the night before, whatever, if everyone's on the same page with...
Well, I think it's a great question, but it's hard to determine, because sometimes a professional development activity just pops up, and that might be a week out versus an athletic contest that we can plan a year in advance. So, it depends upon what it is. And sometimes teachers just come across things that were in their junk mail that they want to have kids too. So, I think once the teachers know, and I agree with Regina, it speeds up the process. Our inner-office mail is an efficient system, it just takes a while to get it through the system. You know, it works with this office, that office, and it takes, it takes some time. But that's a hard question to answer, I guess, and trying to answer.
We pencil them in. We get them, and we, when we get them, we pencil them in, but then they go to him, but they're already penciled in, so we already know that it's coming. If, if it's a van, we have a separate schedule book for the vans, completely away from our trip, our trip list that we have for our, for our drivers to bid on trips, so that's completely separate. And that's how we've been doing it this whole time, and that's my history lesson that I received whenever I got here. I really do think even the vans are going to be scheduled through this, through this Trip Tracker, and I think it's really going to help out a whole lot. Anything? Okay. Thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
I think we have to be effective administrators, we're going to have to work with the teachers because it's going to be a little bit of a change, but I think it's going to make your life easier. I'm hoping, although immediately, if something's available or not available, instead of having a call or email or...
Unless they get used to it.
Office of the building, I'll be able to just log in.
Okay. The last report would be from Doug and I.
I don't have anything. I'll bring you something at some point, but not...
It's all right. All right. We'll move on then. We don't have any unfinished business to discuss, so we can forge ahead to the new business. The first item is for the board to consider a motion to proceed with the bond election in April of 2017. You were given a resolution to look at, and we need to decide what the board wants to do, what actions we would like to take. We want to move forward at this time for April. Just kind of want to find out your thoughts before we can go further.
So, a motion?
Well, we will if we approve this resolution, yes. But if there's any questions or discussions before we make a motion, and if we affect the type of motion we make.
One of the things that Mrs. Welker asked was if we had any initial returns on the survey. We even know that part of that was to send out the survey and ask, try to gauge public interest or opinion. On the 16th, I pulled a report, we had 609 respondents that had responded for the survey. And the way we, we sent that out, Dr. Isaacson, the local assistant tech guru at the central office helped, and I know he talked with Kathy Ringo, and we pulled all of the emails out of Infinite Campus and did just an email blast, every email we had on file. We also used our Facebook, social media, Twitter pages, as well as the school webpage to promote taking the survey. We had 609 respondents, and it was, it's very hard, and I want to preface all this by saying, we can't break out, and we probably could have, but we didn't want to get too in-depth in the survey, who actually is a resident taxpayer of the district, because some of those emails might be Nana who lives in Wisconsin. You know, we just sent them out to everyone. Out of the 609 respondents that we had, in breaking down the information, of those 609, 87% said they would vote yes, almost 88%, 530, and 12, almost 13% said they'd vote no, which was 79 people. And then, we talked and we asked, how many of you have kids that actually live, or, excuse me, how many of you have children attending the school district? We had 424, and in that, we had 19% or 104 that said no, they didn't currently have kids attending the district. But again, we didn't know how many were resident taxpayers out of that group. Of the five, of the 424 that says, I have a kid that goes to Hillsborough, of them, 90% said they would vote yes, and 9% said they would vote no. And lastly, those that say they live in the school district, how many of you physically reside in Hillsborough School District? 510. And over that 510, again, 90% said they would support and vote yes, and 10% said they would not support or they would vote no. So, that was our, the initial conversations for the facility committee and the architects. Today, I checked, there were 612. So, and it's still averaging about the same, between 87 and 90% depending upon that.
And in April, it will just be a simple majority?
Yes, ma'am.
But if it goes to August, it's not?
Yes, ma'am. Four sevens versus two thirds.
So, is there a way to reach people like me? I know we had this conversation. If Lisa hadn't told me that this was on the website, I knew nothing of it. We get asked at the last meeting, and I mean, I don't have anybody in the district, I'm a resident, but I knew nothing of it.
Some of the things that they're trying to do is write the word of mouth, like the facilities committee talked about, using some of these points of contact, and at each of the, in the buildings, hang these up so parents know what we're looking at, and then have informational items that go along with it, such as, you know, here's the buildings, here's what we're going to be doing, and then tell them the dates of coming and participating in the open discussion. And those dates will be outlined. They talked about them at our, in our December, if the board chooses to move forward, at the December Christmas programs, our athletic contests. It'd be great if you had it at the Veterans Assembly, just showing people kind of what the initiative would undertake if it were to pass. And did I leave anything out? I mean, you guys were there. So, that's the initiative. So, how do we reach you? So how do we reach you? And I think that's what it goes down to, is the word of mouth.
Like even the survey.
And getting the information out. And I don't know how that would be unless you had an email, or you looked at Facebook, or you follow Twitter. The newspaper, I mean, we can even put something in the paper and ask if folks are interested in participating. It's hard to target, and that's one thing we put in there, tell us where you live. And I was really shocked that about 25% equally was spread pretty equally throughout the district of where people lived in conjunction to the, taking the survey. It was about 24 to 25% in each quadrant of the district. So it was a pretty good representation, even though we might not have been reaching a lot of people, if that makes sense.
So you were talking about displays in the school?
Yes, ma'am, these.
Everybody have, I mean, obviously, nothing bigger than that.
Yeah, they're going to be the big boards. So you're talking about 40, was it 40 by 36 or some big number? It was a large poster board size. And each building would have its own, and then when you add an activity, you would move them all over. So Ray would have to.
And that's in addition to the flyers that are going to go out too?
Correct. The brochures, yes, ma'am. And we're finishing, putting the finishing touches on the brochure that we'll bring back to the board in December for you to review and give your input on it. As well as these, y'all will approve these before they go out. This is just initial discussion, how we're going to get the information out.
Any other questions?
What is your timeframe with bringing in community members into that smaller steering committee? I don't quite remember when that timeframe is.
We've actually, we pushed that back. The discussion with the Facilities Committee was, we didn't want to start that too soon. We wanted to wait until after the holidays to send out the brochure. Otherwise, people might throw it out when Christmas cards go out. But what they're trying to do is look at, move it to the, the third week of, excuse me, the first week of February, the last week of February, and about that second or third week of March. So all of that's going to continue to steer down into that focus group. And from the community participation, we'll steer the board's direction on where do we want to, do we want to look at using some of the resources, take care of the land? Do we want to do more with the Special Education Department? You know, that's where those conversations will, will begin.
Okay, so tonight, the board needs to make an official resolution, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Decide if you, this is what you want to do, we want to move forward.
Which is what you have before you that was in the packet?
Who sent this?
Email, yes, it was an email too.
Yeah, it was an email. Okay, so I need a motion to approve of the resolution that will authorize the school district to proceed with the bond election.
Make a motion.
Certainly.
Okay. So Mr. Cruz and Mr. Willis. Any other thoughts before we vote?
Can't wait till I vote.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of approving of this resolution, raise your hand, please. All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next item has to do with early graduation. We had two additional students that were applying to graduate. So I need a motion to approve of these two early graduation applications so that they can graduate at semester. Gosh, we're all doing that. Okay, did you pick anybody? Because that's the job. Okay, very good. Any questions or discussion? All right. All in favor of approving these two students? Very good. Okay. Next item has to do with approving technology to be able to seek bids for their smart boards. So I need a motion to seek bids for smart boards, Mrs. Petry and Mrs. Saparsky. And I believe these smart boards are for primary and elementary?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Everybody's good with this already? Okay. All in favor of approving or giving them the approval to seek bids? Very good. Okay, the next item has to do with our student representatives. This is a new thing for us. We had names submitted. We had two students and an alternate.
We decided that in case someone had to be absent for one of the meetings, we, it didn't matter which gender, but we would need to have one alternate just in case.
Okay, that's good. So they know ahead of time. And that alternate is Meredith Aguado?
Yes, I've spoken with all three of the students.
Okay, so Ben Font and Kylie Outlaw are, have been chosen, they've gone through the process and are elected to be the non-voting student representatives to our school.
Yes, and they would have been here tonight, they are so excited.
Well, good, that's exciting. All right, so I, I need a motion to approve of these three students to serve from December 2016 through December 2017. Okay, Eric and John? Any other discussion about that? I know we've talked about this before. Okay, all in favor of approving these students? Okay, the next item has to do with seeking bids for lawn care services. Kind of funny to think of lawn care now. I see. So I need a motion to approve the process of seeking bids for lawn care. Thank you. And Mrs. Saparsky. Any other questions or discussion on that? Looking cut and dry. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. All right, get down to the nitty gritty. We have our audit, and Daniel Jones and Associates are here to discuss and present it to us, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you gentlemen would like to come forward?
Very much. On behalf of Daniel Jones and Associates, I'd like to thank the board for giving us opportunity to audit Hillsborough School District for the year of June 30, 2016. Also, I'd like to thank Kelly and the administration for their help during the audit and for how organized information was presented. We as auditors are to look at the district and issue opinions as to whether or not the school district has been presented fairly in all material respects, has any material misstatements in our financial data, internal controls, and federal programs. We have issued opinions on Pages 1, 44, and 49, and a report on compliance on Page 51 on these items. For the opinion on Page 1, the school district received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest opinion our district can receive. The opinion on Page 44 discusses how the district was in compliance with state issues such as transportation and budgets. The opinion on Page 49 discusses how the district is in compliance with internal controls and that financial statements are free from material mistake. The report on compliance on Page 51 is required by DESI that discusses internal control or which found no instances of material weakness. This year, the Single Audit Act was overhauled. Instead of being called an A133 audit, it's called an Audit Performance or Uniform Guidance. So with these new regulations, all entities that are modified cash basis such as Hillsborough are considered high risk unless that would be mandated by the State of Missouri, which there are other districts within the state that operate under the full pool basis. So what that means is we just have to test more federal programs. We have to make sure that we did at least 40% of all the federal expenditures tested instead of years past, it was 25%. And also, Kelly has completed risk assessment, internal control documents for federal programs that were required this year. And then I also thought it would be a good idea to kind of discuss, make an overview of what we do for an audit, since there was a couple of things of concern that had come up during our audit. Just kind of hit some of the sections that we do, and just an overview of what we do. One thing is, we don't do is a fraud audit, or an audit such as one that the State of Missouri might do in their kind of audits they do out there. We calculate materiality, which is a threshold above which missing or incorrect information on financial statements is considered to have an impact on decision-making of our opinion. So we calculate this materiality. And one of the things that we do is we, it's called analytics. So we show the financial information from last year and the financial information from this year, and then the two different years and the differences. We give that to management in order to give us explanations as to why the fluctuations of the revenue expenditures, and to give us backup as to why that has changed. And then I'm just going to start on the different sections. As far as the cash and investments, we confirm directly with the bank the balance that is on the bank statement to ensure that the statements aren't being scanned in and altered. We test the reconciliations and float them, make sure that they're accurate and that they tie to the general ledger and the ASBR. And then we also look at the subsequent bank statements to clear outstanding checks to make sure that the outstanding checklist is being presented correctly. As far as revenues, we confirm revenues with the State of Missouri and a lot of the federal revenues blow through the State of Missouri, so those are confirmed through them, and then also with the Jefferson County. So we have confirming usually 90% or better of all the revenues to make sure that those are being presented correctly in the ASBR and the general ledger. And then payroll, we always tile the 941s to the general ledger and to the ASBR and make sure that from gross payroll down all the way to what's represented on the 941s is being presented correctly. And also, the confirmation from peers and PSRs, what is being presented on the ASBR ties and comes out correctly. As far as debt, the bonds and leases and everything, we also confirm those with the company that is administering the debt, make sure that those orders being presented on the financial statements is correct. And we roll forward the debt due to future maturity schedules to ensure that they're being presented correctly. And we also do a test of controls where we select usually 30 accounts payable and 30 payroll, just randomly, we get any, any check numbers, and we select those, and then from there, we get all the backup for each one of those checks, make sure that they're at approval, they're clear in the bank, that the vendor was appropriate. Payroll, that they have a contract that agrees with what they're getting paid. And W4s, that the people actually do exist. And then attendance, that, we do a lot with analytics. We analytically look what happened last year versus what happened this year. We also look at what was the school presented to us, and then what was presented to DESI to make sure everything is exactly the same. And then, some instances where we have some manual attendance taken, we can take those documents and go through the system, make sure that they're going through, do a sample of those. Everything we get from there is after the fact. So if we see that in the analytics that there's a raise, rise or more or higher, we can ask questions as to why, and sometimes they'll just be, we'll see a raise of kids that the fifth grade class was bigger than the sixth grade was bigger, and closer, closer to the system that way. In transportation, we look at the miles, the summaries, and then we'll take samples of each one to make sure what was represented in those summaries actually ties. And then the student counts, to recount so many of them, sample them, make sure that the student counts are being presented correctly. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that would, we just confirm with legal counsel if there's anything out there that they need to directly discuss with us as well. Other than that, sort of, you're going to give it over and you don't think I have any other questions?
Anybody have anything to ask?
What's the fraudulent thing we get that we have to send out? Is that to you?
Yes.
You sent it to us, don't you?
It's a requirement under SaaS 99, I'm sorry, I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Alex Kircher, I'm the president of the firm. It's a requirement under auditing standards, SaaS 99, to do a fraud inquiry. And so, even though we're not doing a fraud audit, we're doing a financial statement audit, we still have to inquire to know that, if you guys are aware of anything, and we will investigate that to make sure that the financial statements are prepared and presented fairly. But as far as doing a fraud audit, just to kind of get a little background on that, fraud audit would be, we come out here and look at every transaction. Currently, I'm on a fraud audit right now, and to kind of give you the magnitude of what that fraud audit would cost, $50,000 plus. A state audit, anywhere from about $150,000 to $250,000, $250,000. So, just to kind of give you an idea, the Fox audit, they were out there for 18 months. Springfield, they were out there for close to two years. And that's every day they're out there.
And that comes from our inquiry?
Pardon?
That starts with our inquiry?
Starts with your inquiry? Oh, yeah, if there was something there, we would wind up, no, these, the fraud audits that state auditors do are actually petition audits. They can actually be volunteered too, if you call somebody, they'll, the state auditors kind of change their approach a little bit. They kind of do a couple a year if requested. But those are, use a petition audit, and then once petitioned, the district is required to pay those fees, which can be very costly. So if you see somebody out there, once you sign a petition, they're supposed to have on top of the signature what that cost the district, and it's substantial. And like I said, our audit, as Mark talked about, we do it in all material respects, and these are standards, we never do anything where it's absolute, because if you do absolute, it will be cost prohibitive. Like, for instance, like attendance, because the way attendance is taken electronically, there's really nothing you can trace back. Years ago, I've been in this business 26 years, we'd go back to the school and go back to the teacher's gradebook and be able to see, and all schools required, at least in the United States, required to do it in pen, so it could be changed. Well, with technology, that's completely obsolete, and now you can change it, it still has an audit trail, but it doesn't, doesn't really make a difference if it's a pen or pencil. Teacher, you go back to that book and there's not one master person that can override that system. So as technology's advanced and been great, it's also been a situation where it's, it's left us in a situation where we don't have a good audit trail. Does that make sense or not?
Yes.
I'm not suggesting to the teachers that they have to take attendance with a book, but I mean, yeah, I don't want to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All over here. Hard work. Okay, so after hearing their presentation, and you've had a chance to look through this beforehand, all memorized it, the quiz will be later. We need a motion to approve the FY '16 audit as presented. So do I have a motion for that?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cruz.
So what does the approval actually mean? I mean, I know we have it here, but we really just.
To accept it, I guess?
So we're not actually?
Well, you had it in your email.
Well, yeah.
65 pages.
Come on.
You retired. You retired.
I know, yeah. I'm a new grandma too.
Well, I got my mundane, I read most of it.
By approving, you get your state aid.
I'm impressed.
By approving it, you get your state aid starting. Otherwise, if this doesn't get approved and you can't send it in, you wind up, DESI can cut your funding.
Oh, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, they don't want to do that.
We don't want to do that.
And that has happened to districts that have not turned their audit in by December.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was reading.
Way to go.
Thanks.
So it's important.
Do like to read this before.
Wow.
It was a great bedtime story, Les.
Yes, it was. So I need a motion, then, to accept and approve. All right. I already have that. Any other discussion? Okay. Let's vote, then, by raise of hands to approve this audit. Thank you. Okay. She's going to approve it. All right.
Under your words. I mean, I will read it.
You will. I have every...
She'll text you tomorrow itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice, Chris.
All right. It is 8:04. I met my goal of 45 minutes. We didn't start until some 15.
I moved.
So...
I adjourned.
Very good. Five seconds.
Second.
Mr. Lewis? Any other discussions?
I have something.
Comments? You have something else?
Yes. Oh, okay. So I've been looking at other school districts and their agendas, and something that other school districts do is they take their agenda items and they actually pair it up to their goals for the year. And for me, as a parent, when I first turned into the board meetings, it was hard for me to make that connection and correlation, and I'm thinking about the new students who are going to be on our board, being able to take our agenda items and say this directly impacts and relates to goal number one or goal number two. Does that make sense? I know other districts do that, and I can bring in examples.
Did you talk about the CSIT plan?
Yes.
Is that what you, the Complacent School Improvement Plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that make sense, or do you see value in that for our community members and for our new student representatives?
Well, I see value in it if our community will take the time to look and associate. It'll be something else they have to look at to determine, what does this relate to? They're going to have to pull up the CSIT plan to see. But I don't really see an issue with that.
Well, and one thing I noticed was, Festus did this many years ago, and what it really helped them do is make sure that all their agenda items kept them focused on their goals. And so I thought that was just really interesting, that you were able to, throughout the entire meeting, see they were focused very much on these goals, they were very much aware of these goals, and continue to stand up them by doing that. So, just an observation.
Anything else before we adjourn? Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned, and I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.